Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 22nd City Council meeting. Welcome to everyone here. Thank you for showing up, and welcome to everyone at home. The first thing on our agenda is always a public forum. Public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person has three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if you know it. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. A red light indicates the end of three minutes. We have 10 people signed up for this evening. The first person is Paul Zico, followed by Gail Carlson. Welcome.
Hi, Paul Zico. I live in the Whittaker neighborhood, graduate student in biology at the University of Oregon. I'm here to talk about the Riverfront Research Park. So, dear councilors, I'm here to bring the Riverfront Research Park to your attention. In May 2009, the City Council approved the current vision and values of the Eugene City Council. Your vision is to be responsible stewards of our physical assets and natural resources, and to sustain our clean air and water, and beautiful parks and open spaces. You state your values. You value a community where arts and outdoors are integral to our social and economic well-being, and available to all. You value a community that meets its present environmental, economic, and social needs without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. Twenty-one years ago, a contentious plan was developed and approved by the City of Eugene to completely develop the university's riverfront property into the Riverfront Research Park with minimal public involvement. This plan stands today. The Riverfront Research Park master plan, as it stands today, requires nearly complete development of the university's riverfront north of the railroad tracks. It proposes up to 10 buildings on what is now open space and civic space, wildlife corridor and habitat, and most importantly, public land. The current plan stipulates that because of the sensitive nature of the riverfront area north of the railroad tracks, no building should be taller than six stories. At 90 feet, these buildings would be nearly half as tall as Skinner View. I spent my Sunday this weekend talking to my fellow citizens near the Otzen Foot Bridge. Not one person that I talked to, nobody, knew that the city had approved up to 10 buildings to be built on this site, in the exact spot where they're enjoying the sun. No one knows about this plan because this is the plan of the last generation. This is not our master plan. Today's citizens can barely believe that such a plan exists. This spring, the first research park building surrounded by acres of parking lot on the riverfront is slated to begin construction. This is a big deal. We need your help. Not one building should be built until the Riverfront Master Plan is revised. Any development under the present plan precludes all future sustainable development in downtown Riverfront. Any development under this plan nullifies the countless hours of public service by community members and councilor members in planning the eWeb site redesign. We need your help. The people of Eugene need your help to find a legal method to integrate a Riverfront Research Park plan approved 21 years ago with our current values. We need your help to find a suitable alternative site for the first building that is not directly on the riverfront. These sites exist. We need a Riverfront Master Plan that includes everything we, as a city and a society, have learned in the past 21 years. We need a master plan that includes our changing values for open space and civic space. We need your help. Now is the chance to connect the Eugene Downtown to the university, the people to the Willamette River. Help us not develop the riverfront under this outdated plan. Your vision...
Thank you.
...we need your help.
And next is Gail Carlson, followed by Drex.
Good evening. I'm Gail Carlson, the co-chair of Save Lane County Extension PAC, and I live here in Eugene. I'm here tonight to ask for your support for ballot measure 20158, which will be on the May ballot, 210. This property tax is for all of Lane County citizens to benefit from the resources offered by the Oregon State Extension Service. This measure will ensure that the OSU Extension Service will remain in Lane County. If this measure does not pass, Lane County citizens will not have the same amount of personal services available to them as the rest of the Oregonians have, but they will continue paying federal and state tax dollars for Oregon State Extension Service, and those funds will go to other counties, not ours. Measure 20158 would create a local tax option that costs five cents per thousand of assessed property value, which means only $10 a year on a home assessed at $200,000. The tax revenue expenditures will be tied to measurable outcomes and subject to annual audits. By approving this measure, we will be able to keep services now offered and hire more support staff, which will enable us to keep our offices open five days a week. We will be able to have our Extension Forester back in Lane County. We will keep jobs in Lane County and be able to hire additional staffing. Extension Service in Lane County is not for a select few. We are here for everyone, urban, rural, and inner-city. We answer questions regarding gardening and food preserving, from questions to farming and small woodlands. We would be able to keep our 4-H program here in Lane County and not have to leave and go to a different one. I ask that each of you pledge your support and speak with everyone you meet, and get the word out that measure 20158... Excuse me. Without measure 20158 passing, most of our Extension Service programs in Lane County will disappear. You can visit our website at savelaneextension.com and see how you can get involved in our endeavors to keep our OSU Extension in Lane County. And if you have any further questions, you can email us at savelaneextension@gmail.com.
Thank you.
And I have other things here that I will give to...
Give it to her?
Yeah.
Thank you. Next is Drex, followed by Joseph Newton.
Hi, Eugene. I'm Drex, and I live on High Street in West University Neighbors, which we call the One. And welcome to spring. Spring is cracking through our beautiful community here, and definitely in my neighborhood. Spring looks a little different in my neighborhood than most of Eugene. Spring gets closer, the ping-pong balls start to bloom for all the beer pong that gets played there. Beer cans are abundant. I don't know if you know our neighborhood flower, which I just adopted because it made it easier than being frustrated with it, is a beer cup. They seem to bloom on Saturday and Sunday mornings, and they're everywhere, and then they disappear. Another thing that I've noticed in my neighborhood, too, is that way people like to show their prowess, and, you know, these are 19 to 21-year-old kids. We were all there, I was there, and it just amazes me that that same age person flew our B-17 bombers in World War II and cracked their way through all this responsibility and oneness, and now they're just so dumb. I just am amazed that, you know, they don't know that broken glass on a sidewalk is just waiting for a bicycle, and they don't know to not go and take huge trees and just snap them to show how strong they are at that moment. Well, we all know what it takes to get a tree planted, a lot. You gotta get the tree, you gotta get the hole, you gotta connect the two, and then repeat as you go down the street. So, as I'm here, I wanted to take a step forward. This is never a convenient place to step forward because I'm behind the podium, but metaphorically speaking, I'd like to come up with a suggestion to kind of start helping us build our soul in Eugene. We've got our holes covered, thank you very much. Both of them are just so swell with LCC and whatever's going into our A-hole. But our trees, well, we need trees, basically. I talked to... Yeah, it's moving forward, isn't it? Tree Mark is our arborist for Eugene, one of the most wonderful human beings I know. And he and I talk a lot, and we talk about our trees, and we need to plant more, and he just says a lot of times we don't have enough trees because we're so famous in Eugene for our big-leaf maples that we export them. They wind up everywhere else. So, in taking this step forward, I'd like to suggest to our community, to the rest of Eugene, that people start planting big-leaf maples, that they get a pot. Here's a representative pot. To me, it's a CD tray, but they put a big-leaf maple, not a Nordic maple, a big-leaf maple, and they plant them, and they sprout them in their backyard when they get big enough. Perhaps they bring them to Mayor Kitty's office, or to somewhere that we do, and some are more convenient, of course, but then we can grow them, and then we can plant them in our streets, and they will help the oxygen here, they will help our streets, they will be free because we'll all join it, and it'll be like a victory garden in World War II, where we're all participating. So, to those people at home and here that have at least a green finger, big-leaf maples. And thank you for letting me talk. And am I done? I just... This is a shorter timer now, isn't it? I guess you can't answer till I'm done, but it's only 15 seconds. It's a quick 30. I guess I'm older. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Newton is next, followed by George Cole.
The public library that sits downtown is...
Will you introduce yourself first, please?
Oh, I'm Joseph Newton, citizen of Eugene and Whittaker, and I've been here a long time. That library on 10th Avenue is a result of over a quarter-century of concerted community effort. The site that reflects its architecture should also reflect something of the values in this community that that library does. And you've all worked for a long, long time trying to shop this out to commercial developers. In many cases, I know the last round who qualified seemed to have no real investment in this community, not a good start for something that is the prime block of our community. Right now, we have LCC stepping up to take that place, and LCC, if any institution has an investment in our community, it is LCC. They have an investment in firm values, a vision, a mission, and core values that they stick to through the hardest of times. We can trust them to develop that site in a way that is in harmony with our community, that will move us forward, that will meet the needs of the neighborhood itself, as well as further its mission of educating the people of this county and extending that educational opportunity to the broadest possible segment of our population. Give them all the support you can.
Thank you so much. George Cole is next, followed by Majeska Sees Green.
My name is George Cole, 2760 West 11th. I was born on Willamette Street, July 19th, 1936, graduated from Eugene High, class of 54. So, I've been around a little bit, I've been an observer. The thing I've learned is that life is a continuing learning process. I'm not taking pot shots at anyone, but there's a couple things that bother me, and I'd like to relate to you. We're on the Amazon. Our property is located on the south side of 11th, east and west of Congress Street. Part of it was my inheritance, part of it I have purchased, and we have a family business there. My wife runs Cole's Furniture. Some of you are familiar with it, and it's been in existence for over 50 years. And I don't have any gold or platinum plating anyplace, but it has enabled us to get two kids through college, take care of our parents without help, and so we're thankful for the business, we're thankful for the community. We even had sales overseas because of the advantage of the university here. The thing is, you know, a dollar has to be earned before it can be appropriated. I think that's very important. And I've tried to assemble this property so that it could be developed, and Congress Street, there's a working traffic light there, and if MX comes down the Amazon, it's going to destroy that piece of property. And they're building something that they have no funding for after it's built, and it's hurting the people that really need the bus. I think that's very important. The other thing is that a lot of the buildings that have been built around there have had to be put on piling, and the continual pounding of the MX down the Amazon is going to be a costly situation. So I think we need to really determine what the cost is going to be and what the cost is per right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Majeska Sees Green, followed by Tabitha Bailey.
Hello, Majeska Sees Green, 5th and Van Buren, Ward 7. I'm here to say something before your Wednesday work session topic on homeless camping and the Eugene Code 4.815 on overnight sleeping. And I want to say that I'm speaking, somebody working on a little pilot project for the organization you've heard me tell you about before, Act Lane County, a community together in Lane County. It's going to be starting to do little pilot projects, just partly as the steps we need to do to get the 501(c)(3) determination. And so, this one, even though it's at this point a teeny-tiny project, it really fits in with our purpose. Okay, so, just today, this morning, the county released their report on the count of homeless people, the one-night count, and it's, what, something like 4,000 people in that count. And your topic on Wednesday, I read the AIS from Richie Weinman, and also spoke with him about it on the phone. It's, you know, it's basically about the vehicle camping program. The thing is that there's a heck of a lot of homeless people who don't have a vehicle, and they shouldn't have to get a vehicle to have the possibility of getting into that program, which itself doesn't have enough spaces for other people who need it. So, there's a part of the city code overnight sleeping thing that's about people camping on private property with the owner's permission, but there's a lot of conditions that are required, including sanitary facilities and a whole lot of other conditions. And if the conditions aren't met, the property owner is subject to up to a $2,000 fine every day, and that's pretty prohibitive. And the administrative order, city staff just sent that to me this afternoon, and I skimmed it. It's really pretty scary from the point of view of a property owner or homeowner who might want to help out. Now, within a couple hundred feet of my property, there's two, sometimes three homeless people who... One of them has been living on somebody's porch, sleeping there at night for several years, no problems. He helps out a lot around the neighborhood. Another one is sleeping in a tent in somebody's yard. In both cases, they don't have access to the house for a bathroom, they don't have sanitary facilities, but they're managing that somehow, and they're actually good citizens in our neighborhood. But the consequence for the property owners is really too steep, and a lot more people might open their hearts in some aspect of their property if you all somehow address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Tabitha Bailey is next, followed by Steve Dodrell.
My name is Tabitha Bailey, and I live at the vicinity of 6th and Van Buren, and I am currently homeless, and I am here on behalf of the homelessness, and I have a few concerns. We do camp out, and we do have facilities that we do use. There's places that people can go, and a lot of places we can't go due to the homelessness having their animals, that is part of their family, that they cannot take, and that's why they have that camping program. And the camping program is now in jeopardy because the business owners are saying that they cannot take their animals there, and their animals is like part of their family. And there is a lot of places that people cannot go, like the Jefferson Park. There's been fights, there's been stabbings, there's also been a murder take place there not too long ago, and due to people who do not use drugs or alcohol, there is no places for people to go. You know, there's a lot more places for people that do do drugs and alcohol. That is another disadvantage to people that are homeless, and I think that's why it's more for more property owners to help with the programs for people that are homeless. I believe that, you know, if we can get the community together and help out, it'd be safer for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Dodrell is next, followed by Karen Cholowinski.
Good evening, mayor, councilors. I'm Steve Dodrell. I am the staff chair of the OSU Extension Service here in Lane County, 950 West 13th Avenue in Eugene. I'm here tonight mainly to get the OSU Extension Service on your radar. I realize that you may ask, what does that have to do with city matters? We don't fund the Extension Service. What's this all about? Why are you here tonight? Well, I want to let you know that 65% of the people who walk through our door come from the City of Eugene. I also want to let you know, if you aren't aware of it, that we partner with the City of Eugene to produce the compost specialist program here, and it's been a very highly successful program for 13 years, a great partnership. A lot of the work that we do through our Master Gardener Program and through the compost specialist program also promotes sustainability and self-sufficiency, and a lot of the work is right in line with what the Sustainability Commission is doing. So, there are a lot of ties here, and that's why I believe it should be on your radar. For those of you who are not familiar with the Extension Service, it's kind of a funny name. What it stands for is that we are the outreach unit of Oregon State University. We have offices in 35 of the 36 counties in Oregon. The one county that we do not have an office in now is Multnomah County, and Multnomah County lost their office about four or five years ago because they lost their local funding. We also lost our local funding in 2008, and we've been struggling to try and keep the office open. We've been doing fundraising, we've been going after grants and doing a lot of different things to try and remain in the county, but our stable funding has not been secured, and the funding is going to run out about midsummer. So what that means is programs like 4-H Youth Development, Master Gardeners, the compost specialists, Master Food Preservers, Extension Study Groups, and our new Climate Masters at Home Class, which is just kicking off this week, those will all go bye-bye. What will be left is the Nutrition Education Program, and that is a federally funded program, which you will be hearing about just momentarily from Karen Cholowinski from our program. And I just want to let you be aware that this is happening. A lot of folks we see when we're out in booth events and other special events, they're just totally unaware that Extension has this funding problem, and that we've been here since 1914 as a part of this community, and that may end this summer. So, just wanted to let you know that. I have a handout here that will give you a little brief synopsis of what's going on with our funding situation, and if we can help you in spreading the word to your constituents, I'd be happy to give you whatever information I can about our programs and help raise awareness about the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Karen Cholowinski, and then Alan Hancock.
Good evening, and thank you for taking public comment. And just wanted to share with you a little bit about the Nutrition Education Program here in Lane County. It is one of those, for some reason, that I've been in my position for over three years now, that people don't connect the Nutrition Education Program with Oregon State University Extension. But actually, it's been a part of Extension since the mid-1970s. It's often referred to, and was years ago, as the FNEP Program or the Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program. And in the 1990s, they expanded to the Food Stamp Nutrition Program, when food stamps decided within their program they were starting to... Going to start educating those with limited resources about nutrition. Well, now that name has once again changed, and it's now the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, and we're the education arm. We work with our local school districts, we work with St. Vincent de Paul, we work with the Housing and Community Services Agency of Lane County, HACSA, as many of you know. We work with Metropolitan Affordable Housing, and many other partners, because our program does rely on partners. And the one thing I do know is, for our future, is that we have to continue to have partnerships in Lane County in order to be viable. With the obesity issue that's currently on everybody's radar, it's really important that we be able to educate our youth about what kind of things they need to do to have a healthy... To develop healthy lifestyles, as we know it, many of us know, I should say. It's much easier to develop these habits at age 12 than it is at age 42 or 52, or... I know that I'm not quite the 52 number, but I'm older than the 32, and they are harder to implement at this stage in my life. And we just really are hoping to expand our program. We currently have worked with the Eugene City Parks and Rec and the Campbell Senior Centers. We serve our disabled senior citizens and are just really delighted to be a part of this community. And having Extension in this community is another big part, because they do help us... Help support our program, even though they may not financially fund us, because we are 100% federally funded. They are here to give us housing, I guess you could say, and other support services that federal dollars do not pay. So I hope that you will consider support for Extension, and I look forward to working with the city increasingly in the coming months.
Thank you very much. Last person up today is Alan Hancock.
My comments are in regard to the Riverfront Research Park, and the good thing is I've got good news to start with and good news to end with. Problem is in between. So I'll start with the good news, and the good news is that for decades, many decades ago, Oregonians realized the value of public participation in land use decisions. In the '70s, goals were established to involve citizens, knowing that you get better results by involving the community when contemplating land use decisions. They also realized that when decisions were made, that buy-in was much more substantial when people were involved. And a couple of examples of that, of how that's carried out. One is the eWeb redesign process, and the other is the West Eugene Collaborative, where people from very different perspectives came together to come to agreement. Here's where the bad news starts. City Council formally established the Riverfront Research Park Commission many years ago. It's under ordinance 2.222. And that commission was set with the mission to engage the public. It shall conduct hearings, study, investigate, analyze, and make expert evaluations of proposals concerning the development for the Riverfront Research Park property. Unfortunately, that commission hasn't met for a long time, perhaps decades, and as a result, we have a proposed development on public lands without public involvement. That's not democracy. Here's the good news. We'll get back to the good news. There's a win-win-win situation. Now, you probably can't see it from here, and we'll be emailing this to you shortly. This is the proposed development site right along the precious Willamette River. There is an equally large parcel right over here. It's within the Riverfront Research Park Master Plan. It would very adequately contain the building that is proposed over here, could just be taken from here and put over here, and there could be parking. Okay, so how does the City Council have any relation with this? There's two things that you can do. First of all, to visit this site. This is hemmed in by the mill race and the railroad tracks and the physical plant at the university, so it's really hard to see. I've lived in Eugene for 20 years. I'd never seen this place until about three weeks ago. It's a huge site. There's a lot of room there. So that's the first thing that you can do, is visit this and see for yourself. Don't just look at a map. Actually, go and check it out. The second thing that you can do, under your authority of the Riverfront Urban Renewal District, is to use your authority to gain access from this site along Franklin Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to close the public forum, and first of all, I'll say thank you to those who came to talk about the riverfront, and then thank you for those who came to remind us of the importance of the Lane County Extension. And I actually think they're interested, should the A-councilor or councilors be interested, they would appreciate our endorsement of their measure, so that's something for your consideration. And then I wanted to respond to Drex's concerns about some of the things that are signs of spring in his neighborhood that perhaps are not what he liked as much as others, so I think we'll have to continue to work on those. So I think we'll have to continue to work on those university and neighborhood relationships and work on that particular issue. And sure, little big leaf maples are fine. And then I just want to thank you for coming and talking about the importance of Lane Community College and the role it can play in our city. And Mr. Cole, I appreciate you coming and talking about your concerns, and I remember when my kids were small, some of our first furniture when we were here in the 70s was from Cole's. And then thank you for your sort of alerting us or helping us think about some of the homeless camping issues. Appreciate that, too. That'll help inform our conversation on Wednesday, so thanks for taking the time to do that. Okay, so Counselor Clark.
Thank you. I too appreciate everybody coming down to testify. And Majeska, I appreciate the concrete suggestions. Those are good ones, and I'm going to be interested to see what we can do in our conversation Wednesday to explore some of those options. I think those are good ideas. I appreciate very much the folks from the Extension Service coming to speak. It's good to see my old friend Karen. I am a huge fan of the Extension Service. For anybody who's seen my backyard, at least 2/3 of it is stuff you can eat, and I'm a big fan of growing all manner of things in my backyard. I appreciated, Steve, the information that I saw you dropped off there. I don't know, you mentioned that some of that may contain fundraising and grants and that sort of thing, and I'd really be interested to know before I'm able to suggest that this measure is a good idea, a complete list of those grants that you've applied for or been eligible for and didn't apply for, or that sort of thing, just so we kind of have a better sense of the complete financial picture there. That'd be helpful. Thanks.
Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everybody coming down and talking to us about your different concerns. They're all important, and we're glad to hear from you. I just wanted to take a minute, since we're having, at my request, having another work session on the issue of being homeless in Lane County. I wanted to remind not only the audience here, but the community at large, that they were still looking for volunteers for Project Homeless Connect. As of last week, they were down, they were looking for 600, and I think they had less than 200 people signed up. So if folks can check in with Lane County on their website, I'm sure they'd appreciate some help. I know I'm planning on spending some time there. And also, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Cole. I can imagine when those kind of ideas are being floated around there, the personal impact of how people perceive them are really important for us to hear, because it's also, you know, it's all just a conversation, and it's good planning, but we don't know how it affects people unless they come and share it with us. So thank you.
Counselor Zelenka.
I'd like to thank the folks that came and talked about the Riverfront Research Park. Looking forward to learning more about it on Wednesday. And I am a big supporter of the OSU Extension Service and be glad to support your measure, and I'd like to learn more about it, but I'm sure I'll support it. I think the Homeless Connect is on March 18th. If you have some time to volunteer for that, it'll turn it back on you many, manyfold in terms of the reward that you'll get. And thanks, Mr. Cole, for coming and talking about the Saiaqua, what Counselor Ortiz said. It's very important for us to hear the impacts on people's personal lives and businesses and these choices that are coming for us on the MX route. Thank you.
Counselor Solomon.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to offer, or well, thank everyone for coming down to talk with us tonight. And I did want to offer up my support for the OSU Extension Measure. My nexus with the Extension has been through their Master Woodland Forest Management Programs, and I'm utterly amazed at how many people they can reach and the programs, the rich programs that they can put forth through their efforts. And then they somehow instill in their Master Woodland Managers the desire to turn around and go and do that same thing for future woodland managers. And so it's really a great legacy that they create there, and it's, in my opinion, the $10 per household per year is a great value and one that I can easily support.
So that kind of wraps up our public forum part of the meeting today, and we're going to head on into the, so again, thank you all who came. Appreciate it very, very much. Next item is a consent calendar. Counselor President.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second. Moved and seconded. No one in the queue. Would you please vote on the consent calendar? Ooh, there it came. Okay, eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you. Item three is the, has to do with Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Brenda.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, Brenda Wilson, Intergovernmental Relations Manager.
So I'm guessing, I know that the session is winding down rapidly now. Some things that we had been taking positions on are no longer sort of relevant to the conversation because they're not going anywhere. So I'm just sort of looking to you. Should we just move ahead and ratify the things we had unanimous agreement, but I don't even know if we need to deal with the one that didn't have an agreement. It's sort of gone away.
No, Mayor Piercy. Actually, the House still needs to concur with the Senate amendments, and they'll do so tomorrow morning. So whatever direction you give me, I'll be busy tonight working on that.
Ah, I'd heard the opposite. Okay, well, then, let's put the motion out on the table here.
Okay. I move to ratify the IGR Committee's unanimous actions on bills and approval of staff recommendations in the February 3, 2010 IGR Bill Reports for Bills Not Pulled for Discussion at Those IGR Meetings.
Second. Moved and seconded. So we're going to vote on the ones that had unanimous action. Would you please vote?
I'm looking for...
Eight in favor and none in opposition, so it passes. So would you like to talk about the one we had disagreement over?
Yes, Madam Piercy. This particular bill, House Bill 3609, would permit an enterprise zone sponsor to relax the minimum employment requirements and to extend the tax exemption period for a maximum of two years under very severe economic conditions, which, as you know, we've been experiencing. This bill was brought forth by a state representative from Albany at the request of an Albany business that has four enterprise zone sponsors. They were not able to keep up with the minimum employment requirements as required under their enterprise zone. The state statute does not allow for flexibility within the statute for a sponsor to relax those requirements or extend the period if the business within the enterprise zone can no longer meet those requirements. In this particular bill, staff recommended a support position because it meets one of our adopted legislative priorities, which is the City of Eugene supports efforts to allow additional local flexibility in enterprise zone criterias. House Bill 3609 does not mandate those changes. It merely provides an additional tool for local sponsors should they choose to adopt them. During the IGR Committee meeting, Counselor Taylor wanted to take an opposed position on the bill and instead moved to either a neutral or a monitor motion, and Counselor Poling voted against that motion. That's why we are here before you tonight. The bill passed unanimously through the House. It also, I guess that was on Friday, on Saturday it passed through the Senate, and tomorrow it will go back to the House for concurrence, and it will be carried by our very own Representative Barnhart. It has wide support from local government.
So the motion that we had, we moved forward that had a mixed vote, was for monitoring or, yeah, monitoring?
That's correct, Madam Piercy.
Okay. You want to put a motion on the table?
Yeah, I'll, Mayor, I'll put forward the IGR Committee's majority motion, as is the practice, but if no one else offers an option to change it, I will. So I'll move to monitor position.
Second. Moved and seconded. Okay, I've got Counselor Clark. You're in the queue first.
Well, I look and see some of my colleagues that may amend this, and since I just made the motion, I'll let them go first.
Okay. Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I had, I originally have supported enterprise zones, and I was trying to meet Counselor Taylor halfway with the neutral, because at the time of this discussion, we weren't really sure if it had any wings. And I think Counselor Poling was trying to get there with us, but I don't think that he was. I think he was in support of it. And in reality, when I think about the work that we did on the enterprise zone, and I'm trying to think of the term that we used when we had that committee, Brenda, can you help me remember?
Community standards.
The community standards group. It, in my mind, called for a lot more local ownership of it, and that isn't standing with this, so I will move to support staff's recommendations.
I second. And that is to support.
Support three?
So... What, staff, support three?
Staff recommended, yes. Priority three, support.
So there's a motion to support three, and there's a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Counselor Zelenka.
I oppose enterprise zones, because I don't think they actually work and do what they say they do. I do like the local ownership and the local community standards part, but the compact here is, we give you tax breaks, you give us jobs. This breaks that compact, so I'm going to oppose this.
Counselor Poling.
I want to thank Counselor Ortiz for her motion. I was going to change to support also. This bill does not change any of the requirements specified in the city's enterprise zone. It just gives the city a little more flexibility to act in case of another, and I emphasize the word, another downturn in our economy, where we could, if we wanted to, make some changes. We'd have the option to review the individual enterprise zones agreements and, you know, help out if needed. It doesn't say we have to. It just gives us that option. So I'm glad to support this and hope it passes in Salem.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Would you please vote on the amended motion? So it's five in favor and three in opposition. The amended motion passes, so then we have to vote on the amended motion. Would you please vote on the amended motion? Not, oh, there it is. Four in favor and three in opposition and...
Five to three, Mayor.
Five to three, okay. All right, it passes with five to three. Thank you very much. All right, and thank you, Brenda. All right, now, item number four is approval of minutes, findings, and recommendations from the hearings official on adoption of an ordinance levying assessment for paving and constructing curbs, gutters, sidewalks, streetlights, stormwater drainage, and water quality facilities on Elmyra Road from Bertelson Road to Maple. And I'm supposed to ask, before we do this one, the public hearing on this assessment ordinance was held by a hearings official. Therefore, this is the first time the ordinance has been presented to council. Under the city charter, we can take, only take action tonight if all councillors agree. Does any councillor object to voting on, this doesn't mean you agree necessarily with the ordinance, it means do you agree, object to voting on the ordinance tonight? Anybody? Doesn't look like it. Okay, so then, you put the motion on the table?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the city council adopt, no, have I got that? I move to approve the February 5, 2010 minutes, findings, and recommendations of the hearing official.
Second. Moved and seconded. Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Nope, Counselor Ortiz.
So are we going to have, excuse me, thank you, Mayor, sorry. I would like to make sure that we're having a conversation around this, so this will not, voting on this will not end the subject bullet.
She means that we're having a discussion of assessment policies. You have a subcommittee. Then she wants to know if, what the subcommittee is discussing will affect this in any way.
No. What the subcommittee is discussing cannot affect this. Under the charter, whatever the subcommittee comes up with, whatever the council agrees to, can only apply to future projects, not existing projects.
Okay. Counselor Ortiz?
Okay.
All right, I think we're ready to vote. Would you please vote?
There's a second motion.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. There's a second motion.
I move that the city council adopt Council Bill 5027, an ordinance levying assessments for improvements on Elmyra Road and Maple Street.
Second. Moved and seconded. Counselor Ortiz.
So is there a staff person here to have a little chat with?
Yes, ma'am.
City manager.
We shall. A wee chat.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Michelle Cahill from Public Works Engineering.
Hi, Michelle. I have several questions, and so I'll just, I'll say them all, and then you can answer them however you want to. So can you please explain the difference between the assessments as far as, some folks I noticed were assessed under $1,000 versus $9,000, if that is part of our sliding fee scale? I just want to make a comment that there was, there's over 35 absent owners that live on this street out of 105 people that were assessed. And then can you answer a question about the request from the Lanco investment? They're requesting that we do something. So those are my questions.
So the first question is about the difference in assessment. Some people are being assessed around $1,000 and some people being assessed $9,000 and greater. The assessment code requires us to assess based on the frontage of a property along the road. So that's the baseline for what, how the assessments are calculated, with a minimum of 50 feet and, in many cases, a maximum of 100 feet. And there are a number of properties that were eligible for low-income subsidy, which then, once we calculate the baseline assessment, reduces their assessment. And there's three different categories of that low-income subsidy. So the folks who are closer to the $1,000 were those folks who were eligible for subsidy program. The other question about Lanco was the property owner who proposed they not be assessed because a power pole blocked their driveway or their access, their panhandle access. And we built a driveway there. We believe they can use that with normal vehicles for their property, and so we proposed they be assessed.
Thank you very much. I just want to say that I want to thank the department that worked on this project. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go down that street, but it looks really nice. And every time I've driven down Elmyra Road, there's a lot of people walking on those sidewalks, and it's really, and it's, it actually has, because it is a narrower road than what, I think that the road itself is the same, but because there's like an end of it, I think people are driving slower, too. I've noticed that people are not driving 45 miles an hour like they were before, and I don't know what that's zoned for, but it's a really nice project. And I'm really glad to hear that there was enough, that we were able to make it, that the cost for some folks was less than, you know, within what they could afford. I really appreciate that, all the extra work that the department went through to address that stuff. Thank you.
Counselor Solomon.
Yes, I too wanted to thank staff for their work with the neighbors. It was a really long process. We had several iterations of the plan, and it was, at times, very contentious, but we just hung in there, and we met the folks halfway, and I think, I do believe that they're going to be pleased, if they aren't already, with the final results. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to vote on that. Would you please vote? Seven in favor and one in opposition. It passes. So the next item is the approval of minutes, findings, and recommendations from the hearings official on adoption of an ordinance levying assessments for paving, constructing curbs, gutters, sidewalks, medians, traffic signals, streetlights, street trees, stormwater drainage facilities, stormwater quality, bioswales, wastewater facilities, and related improvements on Chad Drive and Old Coburg Road. And again, I'm to ask you, a public hearing on this assessment ordinance was held by a hearings official. Therefore, this is the first time the ordinance has been presented to council. Under the city charter, we can take action tonight only if all councillors agree. Does any councillor object to voting on this ordinance tonight? Seeing none, I think we're ready. Counselor President.
I move to approve the minutes, findings, and recommendations of the hearing official of February 5, 2010.
Second. Moved and seconded. Moved and seconded. See, no one in the queue. I think we're ready to vote on that. Eight in favor, none in opposition, there's one more motion.
I move that the city council adopt council bill 5028, An Ordnance Levying Assessments for Improvements on Chad Drive and Old Coburg Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I'm looking, and there's no one in the queue, would you please vote? Seven in favor and one in opposition, it passes. So, with that, I believe our business of the evening is complete, thank you all very much.